The hour of 6:00 PM is here. Before the City Council meeting, we will have a public hearing regarding River Oaks and quick take authority. Just for the record, these minutes will be recorded. We have our live court reporter here taking minutes of the public hearing. Again, I like to hereby open the public hearing concerning the intention of the City of Calumet City to seek quick take authority, eminent domain authority from the Illinois So I would state the purpose of the meeting. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony and comment concerning the intention of the City of Calumet City to seek quick take eminent domain authority from the State of Illinois Legislature. Notice of this public hearing was duly published in the South Suburban News. Owners of the property have received correspondence concerning this hearing as well. The property will be the subject of the quick take authority, as commonly known as River Oaks Mall, properties, both those east and west of Torrance Avenue. Quick take authority would enable the city to take ownership and control of the properties upon the city's payment of the preliminary determination of just compensation. As in any exercise of eminent domain powers resulting in the taking of property for a public purpose, the process for determining the full and final amount due, each property owner will continue before the circuit court. With quick take authority, the city's control and redevelopment of the properties would not be delayed because the Illinois Legislature will act. So at this point, we are seeking to quick take River Oaks East, River Oaks West. This property requires us to have a public hearing, again, which was posted. And at this point, I would like to ask, is there anyone who wishes to comment or provide testimony of why the city should or should not take quick take authority with River Oaks East and West? If there is anyone who would like to step to the mic, please state your name for the record, address. Again, this is River Oaks property alone. We will have our full council agenda coming up next. We're in a public hearing just discussing River Oaks East and West quick take authority.
You can't make a statement pertaining to the River Oaks Golf Course, a disaster for the boys deserve.
That will be in the next meeting. So after this hearing, yes. Yes, again. So again, we are in a public hearing regarding River Oaks East and West. At this point, the public is invited to make statements, comments. Any alderman as well can make statements or comments regarding River Oaks West. This matter will be recorded and provided to the Illinois Legislature. By law, we have to keep this public hearing open between five and 10 minutes. So we will, again, stay on the record regarding River Oaks East and West quick take authority.
How soon will, how soon could the city take ownership based on a quick take?
Under the proceedings of quick take, the city could take control within 30 days of approval by the Illinois Legislature. With eminent domain, their process is six to eight months or even longer.
How long would it take before we go for, before the legislature?
It has been sent to the legislature. It is there and just waiting on the city action. Are there any other aldermen who would like or to comment regarding the quick take authority? We're allowed to explain the process, the quick take process? Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Alderman Smith had asked, but did this procedure, what once, if consensus is given, I guess, today by the council, what was the timeframe? I guess it's, what was the estimated timeframe for this process to be, to get seen through, I guess?
So the quick take property, quick take process with the Illinois State Legislature takes, once that's granted by the state legislator, it's 30 days approximately with eminent domain. It's a longer process. So right now, the process that we're seeking is quick take authority, which will give the city, get it sooner, but also allow us to give them just compensation, mean River Oaks West and River Oaks East.
Thank you. I guess another question would be if, do we have, I'm not sure if we can discuss this, but would we have an end user in mind or would the city be taking over responsibilities of the upkeep or utilities of the sites?
That's something we can discuss down the road with, with end users and the full out plan. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment? Again, we're in public hearing on quick take authority for River Oaks Mall properties, both those east and west of Torrance. There being no further person desiring to speak or present evidence or testimony, I declare this public hearing closed and want to thank everyone who attended. We will have more information coming once we get the approval from the General Assembly. But again, I want to thank the residents for coming and everyone interested in the city's desire for River Oaks East and West. Take a brief recess and then we'll start the regular meeting. We'd like to call the meeting to order of the City Council. The hour of 6:00 PM, having come and gone, we'd like to call the meeting to order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? At this point, we will, I guess, break up when our chaplain gets here and we'll have a prayer for the City Council. We're at the point now, item three, we're roll, a public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make a comment? If so, please step to the mic, limit your comments to three minutes, and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Cash Crenshaw. I'm a resident of the Park of River Oaks. I want to say thanks to the four aldermen that made their presence at the meeting that we had at Sand Ridge pertaining to a company that comes in, come in to try to see what they could do with the River Oaks Golf Course. Mayor Jones, we would appreciate you and your administration to be present when there's a meeting because they're speaking of, they didn't say verbally, but subliminal, they might want to take over our golf course. I've been living there for 42 years and there's always been a drainage problem. It's in a flood area, but they couldn't answer any intelligent questions that we asked last night. The company that is marketing company, the young lady was nervous and they first disrespected us by putting up zip codes and they want to talk about River Oaks Golf Course and they didn't have our zip code at all, like we didn't exist. Those are first things. So with your presence and your administration's backing, we, the Park of River Oaks, because we know we cast votes, we do vote, and we vote strong. We would love to have your input, but nothing but your presence in your ears. Alderman Alderman Smith from the Fort Ward, which is my alderman, spoke very eloquently and very well and asked some questions that they couldn't answer. So you're going to send a marketing company out to us and you can't even answer the question that even the alderman asked. Something is wrong with that picture. You're not going to go to Ween, you're not going to go to Winnecker, you're not going to go up on the north side not prepared to answer the residents' questions. So to me, that was a first form of disrespect and I didn't lose it, but I asked them very pertinent questions because I made example out of them. They didn't have no history of the golf course. They had no history. They didn't know why the condos were built, when they was built. They didn't know who owned the golf. Indigo is the management company of the golf course. It used to be Billy Casper, but they didn't. Asking the questions pertaining to that because the marketing committee or the survey people didn't have the answer. So I would appreciate, and I thank you for the time, and I appreciate the three aldermen to my right, the men, and Mr. Alderman Smith, they was there in good force and they made us proud because we know somebody listened to us. They would take it like they did a Cabrino Green and do what they want to do with it. And we just be outside looking in and they'll violate us. But with you being our mayor, we hope you stand with us and speak on our behalf. Only speak on truth. We don't know opinions. Only speak on truth and you qualified to get the truth because they have to answer the mayor. They have to give you your respect no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to, please step to the mic, state your name for the record and your address?
My name is John Rubicki. I live on 1300 block of Burnham Avenue and we've been having some problems in the south side of town and it's been getting a little bit worse than normal with the loud music. It's been going all hours of the night. It's been going during the daytime. My wife hasn't had sleep like in the last month and we both work. I mean, if I was retired, I wouldn't mind it, Mr. Mayor. I tried to call your office to get some advice from you. I tried to call my alderman in the sixth ward and my wife never got a response. The only thing I can do is I'm trying to find a house where this music's coming from. I've been walking the streets with my wife for the last two weeks and I can't narrow it down, but also the music is coming from loud cars going down Burnham Avenue. And I know you're short on police. I never see police in my district ever, except when there's an accident on Burnham Avenue. Then they gotta come. But I, what I would like to do, Alderman, is I work at Pete's. I'm on my lunch break right now to come to this meeting to talk to you people. You got signs out there by Ginger Ridge that says loud music is strictly prohibited by the apartments and also by Sand Ridge. I noticed you got signs that say loud music is strictly prohibited. And this is not really music. This is the boom, 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 boom. To me, that's not music. And the drums, that's not music. I'm 66 years old. That's not music. So Mr. Mayor, the alderman, I don't know if any of the wards are having a problem. I had problems with fireworks earlier and the gentleman, the seventh ward gentleman, he helped me out last time. In the summertime, my wife came and talked to him. The fireworks have succeeded a lot. They come out every five minutes, they throw the fireworks in the street, they go back in the house because that's illegal. But you helped me, you helped me, sir. You, thank you so much. And I just hope, lead on the line, you people can play a role of patrolling a little more and I'm going to try to get you an address for this. Music's coming from next, next council meeting. We can go to the house and maybe, I don't know what you can do, but I'm going to try to get to the police department. So thank you so much for, you're doing, you're doing a fantastic job for the city.
Thank you.
And I, I got to get back to work. Thank you so much.
Before you go back to work, our police chief, Chief Colas is there. Make sure you talk to him and get it, get your information and we'll make sure he comes by.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on public, in public matters? Anyone else? If not, we will, our next item, sorry. Thank you. If you can state your name for the record and your address, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Wanda Corbin. I'm at 107 155th Street and I can agree with the guy that just left. I'm having the same problems. I got so many issues, I'm not going to talk about them all. It's going to have to be in between because it's too much. Well, we need to make these landlords accountable. They know about certain situations that's going on on my block and it been going on for over two months and we can't get no peace and no rest and we know where it's coming from. And that's all I have to say.
And thank you, Wanda. We do have your email and the chief is going to call you. Wanda, the chief did call you today, so if you can step and talk to him, he has the information. Is there anyone else that would like to? If not, the next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. I'd like to table the minutes that appear on the agenda. We will have them on the next meeting. Our next City Council meeting, just for the public benefit, has been changed from November 11 to Monday, November 8, Monday, November 8 at 6:00 PM. And our November 25 meeting has been changed to November 22. So we'll post it at the website as well. So again, our Thursday, the second and fourth Thursday meetings have been both changed, November 8, and then also changed to November 22 at 6:00 PM. I was getting a little too excited about this meeting, so I didn't ask for a roll call. So Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll and then we'll say a prayer? What, our pastor just walked in? Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Here. He's out of the change. Here. Pastor, if you can come up and start us off or interject with a prayer, we appreciate it.
You know what? I type one up for you.
You got it and you can give it to us.
Good evening. Let's bow our heads for a word of prayer. Father, we thank you for every one of these elected officials and appointed staff in this room tonight. We thank you that you have given them the wisdom and that you have anointed them to serve the people of this city. We thank you for Mayor Thaddeus Jones and we ask tonight that he would not become discouraged, that he would draw strength and confidence in what you have planned as he trusts in you. We understand that yesterday is gone, but you remain the same today, forever and always. We thank you as you lead him and direct him. And we would ask that you give each council member the wisdom to govern even in the interest where they agree and where there is conflict. We have gathered in this space tonight and we ask that you help us to become keenly aware of our assignments and our responsibilities. And we ask that you always keep us focused on what is good and what benefits this city. We ask tonight that you give us the wisdom to look out for the welfare of the citizens, the needs of the businesses and the residents. We pray tonight that each elected official have a commitment to righteousness and justice. And we ask that you give this council the ability to be phenomenal and fantastic and to work together even when there is honest disagreement. I pray tonight for each council member in this room, that you give them personal peace in their lives, that you bless their families, that you bless them on their jobs as you navigate through the difficulties of this season of pandemic. We ask that you give them the grace to do what you have called them to do. And we ask that your peace God dwell in this city. We ask that you cover the law enforcement and the firefighters and the other public servants who put their lives on the line each and every day. And Lord, we ask that you have your way in Calumet City and let your will be done in heaven and on earth and in Calumet City, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Our next item, reports of standing committees. Alderman Gardner? Thank you. Public Safety, Alderman Williams?
No report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Public Utilities, Alderman Smith?
No report tonight.
Orders and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
Health, Education, and Welfare, Alderman Padden?
No report, Mayor, but I believe I was in the hallway talking to a resident when the roll was taken, so just for the matter of record, should I please be?
Yeah, for the record. Permits and Licensing, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief announcement, I will be trying to hold a Public Works Committee meeting prior to our November 8 meeting if possible, certainly by the end of November, but I will try to schedule that meeting prior to the November 8 meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Under City Council Reports, I have a couple items. One is just to announce to the City Council and the public, we have started an energy panel made up of Val Williams as a chair, Alderman Smith, Alderman Gardner, City Treasurer Tarka, Ken Chastain, a city engineer, John Casparic, a financial consultant, Deanne Jeffrey, Rick Woljakowski. This panel, we've received seven proposals to develop our energy in Calumet City and use property. We are going forward with these proposals to now vet them, but there are five measures that I'm asking this committee to look at to make sure that it's beneficial to Calumet City, that it's not using city property. Of course, that this energy proposal includes hiring of city residents and also that the energy is efficient and that we can use this and make sure that it's sustainable in Calumet City. Alderman Smith is on the committee. He's the chair of Public Utilities. I'm sure Val has more meetings set up. The first meeting was held yesterday. We'll try to keep it to two aldermen. You guys can switch out if you want, but no more than two aldermen can serve on the panel. We're going to make sure that we utilize all the space and Val, at some point, is going to talk about the property at Marble Street with the federal government helping us to develop that land, which is going to be beneficial for the first ward and for the City of Calumet City. So if you have any questions and Val, if you want to open it up to the public to make comments as well, you can, but it's a great time to not only bring an energy project into Calumet City, but want to thank Val for leading the charge. Well, the next item, just want to announce that the Calumet City Library is open. It opened today from 10 to 4. The library will be open from 10 to 4 going forward. The library is planning a Halloween grand opening. All the public and all the aldermen are invited. It will be on Sunday, October 31st, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. So I want to encourage everyone to not only use the library, support the library, but we're going to make sure that we get extra funding for the library as I want to make sure that that library is top in the state. So I want to thank Scott Neiman, who is here, who is the president of the library board. Jatom Russell is the vice, vice president. We want to thank them for not only getting the library open. When I went up there today, residents were coming into the library. So congratulations on opening and want to encourage people to still go. The next item I have under my report, under informational items, I want to thank the aldermen who attended not only the breast cancer walk that we had on Saturday, October 23rd, but before you, we have baskets that we would encourage aldermen to give out to survivors in Cal City. Want to thank the American Cancer Society, Local 150, Prairie Chucking for bringing out the pink trucks, Alderman Tillman, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Williams, and Alderman Smith, and Alderman Navarrete for attending. The residents were real excited about what we're doing for breast cancer. Even though we raised like $1,500, our goal is to raise more for the American Breast Cancer Society and we want to just let those survivors know that we're here for them and we care for them. So thank you for coming out and supporting. And also lastly, before I go to City Council Reports, you see the check that was given to us by Congresswoman Robin Kelly. We want to thank the fire chief and his department for not only writing a grant to get the $200 to $1,000 that was given to us by Robin Kelly, but we know that she promised more and we're going to hold her to that. So we want to thank Robin Kelly. We have a resolution on the agenda to make sure we thank her and Senator Durbin as well. So again, thank you, Chief. Thank all the firefighters who not only helped write the grant. I appreciate you. So let's start with City Council Reports. We'll start on this side with Alderman Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind the suburban ward residents of the upcoming Town Hall meeting, November the 15th, at the Public Safety Training Center at 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, 24 state. If any questions on that, please contact the office at 708-891-8197. Also, please continue to report any suspicious activity, suspicious activity regarding any vacant properties or any unrest that you see. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Padden?
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick things. One, we're at that time of the year where we've got the great combination of leaves falling in the street and torrential rain over the last, I don't know, six weeks now. So please, I'm asking, you know, we're asking the residents to make sure that if you've got a catch basin in front of your house, just make sure it's clean, keep the leaves off of it. You know, we don't want to be dealing with, you know, flooded roads, especially this time of year. And then the only other item I have, Mayor, I have been away for a few days for work, so there are a few calls I know that I have not returned yet. I apologize for that. We are working our way through those right now and I should be getting in touch with you if you left a message over the last four or five days, within the next day or so. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Calumet City residents and Fifth Ward residents. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please feel free to reach out to my office, Tonight before us, the agenda is a motion to approve the trick or treat hours. I would advise you guys to be extra careful, use caution, pay attention, watch out for speeding cars, and if you see something suspicious, please report it. Also, there are going to be a lot of Halloween events this weekend. You are encouraged to attend them all if you can, starting on, I believe, Saturday, Friday with the Park District, correct? And leading up until Sunday at the Calumet City Memorial Library, Public Library and Second Ward Alderman Wilson is going to be having one as well. And also Third and Fourth Ward Alderman DeAndre Tillman and Alderman Williams will have an event. Feel free to attend those and be safe and enjoy your weekend. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First, God makes all things possible. I want to invite the residents out to the Halloween trunk or treat in partnership with Mayor Thaddeus Jones and Alderman DeAndre Tillman. It is this Saturday, October 30th, from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. Please feel free, still taking volunteers, if anyone wants to come out and decorate their vehicle and hand out candy, please feel free. If you want to volunteer, please be there early as a volunteer and not as a trick or treater. We would appreciate that. The ward is also now taking requests for food baskets for the holidays. If you know a family or if your family is in need, please contact 708-212-2240, that's 708-212-2240. And the Third and Fourth Ward. And the Third and Fourth Ward collaborated Town Hall Meeting, it will be November 1st, Monday, November 1st at 6:30 PM at Downey Park, that's 300 Jeffrey Avenue in Calumet City of course, so we'll see you there and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Tillman.
Thank you mayor. Each year my office has a turkey giveaway and it is now that time for residents to call my office and put their name on the list, it is first come, first served. The distribution of the turkeys will be November 20th at noon at Downey Park, so you can start calling my office at 708-891-8193, Third Ward residents only. And Alderman Williams already spoke to it, but on November 1st, we have our Town Hall Meeting, 6:30 at Downey Park, 300 Jeffrey, and I look forward to seeing everybody come out to the trunk or treat that me and Alderman Williams along with the mayor is doing this Saturday, so thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you mayor. Second Ward, October 31st, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, we will have our Halloween event in Commissioners Park, Exchange and Wilson, right behind Castaway Bowling Alley. Most of us know it as the skate park. We will have trunk or treat, food courtesy of the mayor, candy, free coats, gloves, hats, scarves, you name it. To the young ladies of the Second Ward who challenged me to a dance-off, challenge accepted. I encourage the Second Ward to come, if you live near Commissioners, please take the time to enjoy the brisk weather and walk and enjoy food and company of fellow citizens of Calumet City. I do want to say thank you really quickly to Dr. Lolita Cleveland, Tomorrow's New Foundation, Calumet City Chargers, Chargers Elite All-Stars, Kingdom Builders Church, Smokies on Torrance, the Second Ward Resident Volunteers, Calumet Memorial Park District and Mayor Jones for volunteering and offering donations. I have listened to and responded to the youth sports teams in Calumet City who utilize T of North facilities. I understand that you all have been presented with outrageous out of district fees, which may cause many teams to leave Calumet City and cross the border. I will do my best to contact the elected school board to get more information. I do want to thank every team in Calumet City, from football to soccer, cheer to dance, everything, for what you do for the youth of our community. Block Club Presidents, please email me your contact information at mwilson@calumetcity.org. If you don't know if you're a Block Club representative or president, email me anyway, we need to knock on some doors. I wanna have a Block Club President or Representative Breakfast. We are only as good as our strongest league, we don't have weak leagues in the Second Ward. We need to push Calumet City forward. Thank you, God bless Calumet City.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you mayor. So Alderman Wilson, if you're looking for judges for the dance-off, I will volunteer, not participate. Just also piggyback off the gentleman who spoke during public comment, the Cook County Forest Preserve in collaboration with Site Design Group, Landscape Architects, had a meeting yesterday that was very, very interesting, very worthwhile, there was a lot of feedback from residents. I'm in huge support of the River Oaks Golf Course, I do participate there, more landscaping than golfing I think, but I see the importance of it over there and Alderman Smith did have some, some nice words there for the residents and how we can support that, I certainly support that. We had no time to get to the Burnham Avenue Golf Course, which is not in Calumet City, but closer to the First Ward, but I just wanna ask residents that they call their Cook County Commissioner Stanley Moore, you can call him, email him, information can be found online, Cook County President Tony Preckwinkle, just to voice your support for those golf courses. Doesn't necessarily have to be a golf course, so you can certainly voice your opinion on what you would like to see there, but certainly some great green spaces, especially for the First Ward and Burnham Golf Course in Burnham, that we wanna make sure that we can continue to utilize. So please, you can call Cook County Commissioner Stanley Moore, Cook County President Tony Preckwinkle, or myself at 708-891-8198. Secondly, I would like to show my support, ask my colleagues to support a resolution on today's agenda, number three. This is for approving the submission of an application by the city of Calumet City for a project to be funded by the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, rebuild downtowns and Main Streets Grant Program. As residents of the First Ward know, we've spent a lot of time looking at Burnham Avenue, which used to be our very vibrant downtown strip, and we've been working through the recommendations of the Burnham Plan over the years, and I wanna thank the Economic Development Department and our city engineers, Farnsworth Group for continuing that initiative and the importance of Burnham Avenue to the First Ward as well as Stage Street. So thank you for that continued support, and that's all I have this evening mayor, thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Madam Clerk.
I would like to remind the residents that the Park District is having a Halloween fright night on Friday, October 29th. That is from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, there will be games, movie and golf, miniature golf. It is $3 per person and it includes pop and drink, treats and candy. Again, that is Friday, October 29th, and I would like to wish all of the Calumet City residents a very safe and happy Halloween.
Thank you clerk. Mr. Treasurer.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Next item on the agenda are informational items, item 8A through G. Does anybody have any questions regarding items 8A through G? If not, entertain a motion to accept the information items and place them on file. Is that a motion? Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Gardner. Alderman favor?
Aye.
May I oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda are item nine, new business. You have before you items 9A, 1 through 9. Are there any questions regarding items 9A, 1 through 9? Not, can someone make a motion to accept new business items 9A, 1 through 9? So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Williams. Do we need a roll call? Roll call.
Foster?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes. Thank you. Item B are building permits, you have before you new fence and new garage construction, we can take those in one motion. If the Aldermen have had a chance to look at building and new fence, are there any questions? Not, can someone make a motion to approve the new fence constructions, as stated, and new garage? Second made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Smith. Roll call.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
She said Williams.
Well, Wilson.
I thought she said Williams first.
She just said it.
Right, we both say yes, so.
I knew what you meant.
That's right.
Item C on the agenda are resolutions and ordinances. Just as a point of reference, item two, we approved already, which is our agreement for our de-escalation grant. We received $66,000. This is, hopefully, this will be a great sign of our further request to the Department of Justice for money, more money for our community. And then Alderman Navarrete explained item three, so is there a motion, is there any questions first about items C 1 through 3? If not, not, can someone make a motion to approve resolutions and ordinances, 1, C 1 through 3?
So.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Wilson. Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Yes. Financial items, Alderman Gardner, I know we were moving some items, can you state the items we're gonna move for the record?
Yes mayor, we're moving items 4, item number 11, 12, 13, 15, and 16.
13?
15 and 16.
15 and 16. So, for the record, we're removing items number 4, we got 12, 13, 15, and 16.
Yes.
Is there a motion Alderman for the remaining items?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith, to approve the items so stated on the agenda that were removed and the items that amended that were approved.
I'm sorry, I had a question.
We're gonna approve items 1 through 3, 5, 13, and 17 through 19.
You have that Alderman? Yeah, yeah, no, I have those. My question was in regards to 10, 7, 6 and 7.
Those items are removed, so we could...
Oh, we didn't, we didn't remove those. I know we meant to, that's why I was just wanna include 6 and 7, he mentioned 6 and 7, but...
At number 14?
He did.
No.
No, he didn't, he didn't mention, he said 4 and then he jumped to, yeah, 4, 11, so 4, 6 and 7. As well, so 4, 6, 7, 11, 12, 13, 15 and 16.
Wait, guys, we all, just for a clear record, Alderman, restate your motion, include items 6 and 7.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to remove items that are so particular, 4, 11, 12, 13, 15, and 16, and we're removing items 6 and 7.
For clarity, we're removing items 6 and 7?
Yes.
Okay. Worded that weird.
Alright, so that motion to remove them, let's have a, we have a roll call on that, we have a roll call to approve items, clerk for the record, can you state the items we are approving?
Okay, I'm gonna try to get this right. We are approving items 1 through 3, item number 5, item 8, through 10, item 14, and item 17 through 19.
That's the motion on the floor Alderman.
Okay.
So move.
Alright, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
So I'm removing second by Alderman.
Yes.
Thank you. Smith?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Patton?
Right, we have no executive session, so we're in unfinished business. Alderman Navarrete.
Nothing this evening mayor, thank you.
Alderman Wilson.
I just want to say that I would like to, and I'm going to send a message out to the Second Ward, I would like to set up a meeting for November. I understand what we do not want in the ward, but I would like to learn more about what we do want, because we have a number of studies on the open land in our ward and we need to build it how we want it built. Thank you. Have a safe Halloween weekend, or for my religious children, Hallelujah Day. Thank you.
Alderman Tillman.
Nothing mayor, thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Nothing, thank you.
Alderman Gardner.
Nothing mayor, thank you.
Alderman Patton.
Yes mayor, one quick thing, thank you. I'd just like to take a moment to address something that happened last week and quite frankly, that's been happening for a while, and I'm gonna read this because it took me a little while to gather my thoughts. For well over a year now, I've been subjected to constant lies being told about me to the public, questions about my integrity and my motives. Because of the numerous threatening things said to or about me, my wife and two small children have had to live in a constant state of fear that when I'm traveling for work, something is going to happen to them and I won't be there to protect them. My business and my business partner have been dragged through the mud on issues that have zero to do with Calumet City. A lot of people have asked me recently why I'm still here. Wouldn't it be easier to simply walk away and not look back? Wouldn't it be better for my health, both mental and physical? The answer is yes, it would be. It's not who I am. I love this city, I wasn't born here and I wasn't even raised here, but over these last 10 years, this has felt like home more than anywhere else I've lived in my life. I met my wife here, I'm raising my two children here, and for the last four plus years, I've had the honor of serving the residents of the Sixth Ward. An honor I will continue until my work is done. I'm naturally curious and always looking at issues from all angles. I ask questions and sometimes my questions upset people, but the residents of the Sixth Ward elected me twice to continue to come here and make sure that their tax dollars are being spent in a responsible fashion. When I am unsure or simply not informed enough, I ask questions. So the next time you hear something said about me that sounds so ridiculous that it couldn't possibly be true, please remember that it probably isn't. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Smith?
Yes, just wanna speak to the residents of the Seventh and also city residents along with the Parker Revolts residents. I have reached out to the Parker Revolts HOA and along with myself, Commissioner Stan Moore, we will be meeting with the park at the first available date in November in the upcoming month. I do stand with the Parker Revolts, not just because I'm a resident, but I stand with them primarily on, there's been a lack of innovation in the Parker Revolts Golf Course for some time. There's been too many, too much deferred maintenance. I spoke very, very cogently regarding that at that meeting, and what the meeting primarily was about was about discussing options, but in my estimate, it was about more than that. I'm glad that the residents attended, voiced their concerns, that what we want is we want improvements, we want equity, we want the same equity and comparable equity and competitiveness that other golf courses get, and we're not getting that. And so, to change it, no. You haven't even talked about how you're gonna improve it to make it the golf course that it should be. So that's where I stand. I don't stand on bringing trails, walking trails and things like that to that golf course, because find me one golf course in America that has that, and you can't. So we're tired of it. Our community is 75% black, and I'm tired of seeing us not get our fair share of equity when it comes to resources off the tax levy. So I stand with the park residents, and I want you to stand. Contact Commissioner Stan Moore, voice your concerns, voice your concerns and tell him that that is an amenity that we want to see improved. Contact President, Cook County President Tony Preckwinkle and tell her the same thing. Write letters. You'll hear more from me on that as the weeks ahead align. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Mr. Treasurer, unfinished business?
Nothing.
Madam Clerk, unfinished business? We have one item, Val, I don't know if we're gonna mention the Realtors Breakfast. There'll be a Realtors Breakfast this Saturday from 8:30 to 10:00 at the... You wanna come on up Val? I don't wanna. You got, you got all the information.
There's a Realtors Breakfast slash... Yes, good evening everyone, there's a Realtors Breakfast slash somewhat Developers Breakfast scheduled for this Saturday, the 30th, from 8:30 to 11:00. 8:30 to 9:00 is a registration, we wanna meet with each Realtor one-on-one as they come in. There's about 34 well-renowned commercial brokers and Realtors that have RSVP to be there. The speakers include all the department heads who talk about the process and procedures of doing development within the community, as well as welcoming from our Chief of Staff and the Mayor. We hope that you join us, let the Realtors know how we do business in Calumet City and that we're professional and we're strict and we're wonderful. Thank you.
Alright, everyone, so there being no further business to come before the City Council, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move. Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Williams, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.